Okay. Good evening, and thank you for joining us for our November 30th Board of Education meeting. Please join us in a pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will turn it over to Dr. Byrne for the report of the superintendent.
Good evening, and thank you for joining us for our November 30th Board of Education meeting. I hope everyone had a restful and resorative Thanksgiving holiday, and happy Hanukkah to all of our families who are celebrating. If you haven't attended a board meeting recently, we are back to holding in-person meetings here at the Middle School Multipurpose Room. But given that we must still be mindful of State Department of Health requirements for social distancing, we are also continuing to broadcast our meetings on YouTube Live. Additionally, all attendees and participants are required by order of the governor to wear face masks. This meeting was originally to have taken place last Tuesday night, but was postponed as many of our students, parents, teachers, and administrators wish to attend a memorial service for Morgan Kaplan, a member of the senior class and a friend to many in the community. Our deepest condolences to the Kaplan family. We continue to provide increased support for students who are struggling with the loss of Morgan. Counseling services are available to all in need. We have begun to collaborate with the Bereavement Center of Westchester in offering training to our staff and counseling to our students. We will continue to have therapy dogs at Rye High School as they have proven to be a highly effective support for the school community. Many thanks to Detective Gabe Caputo and the Rye PVA for bringing the therapy dogs to the schools. It is important for me to recognize our counseling and clinical staff from across the schools as they have provided much-needed additional support at Rye High School. In particular, our Rye Middle School counselors and clinicians who have been available to our students and staff have been critical in effectively supporting the Rye High School community. We've also been blessed with support from neighboring school districts, and for this we are incredibly grateful. Many thanks to Harrison, Pleasantville, Southern Westchester BOCs, Portchester, Bronxville, Dobbs Ferry, and Mammarineck for sending teams of clinicians to Rye High School last week. We also had offers from other neighboring districts as well, and are deeply appreciative for the support and kindness. We are grateful to the many members of our community who reached out, offering assistance, sent food to the school, have helped us to access resources. My closing thanks are for the Rye Youth Council, a key partner in serving the youth of Rye. They continue to provide clinical support and knowledge and collaborate with the school community. This morning, Dr. Latimer of Cognitive and Behavioral Consultants presented a workshop to families called "Stabilizing Chaos: Fostering Psychological Resilience in the Wake of Adverse Events and Traumatic Crises." Close to 30 parents and teachers attended this very informative workshop, and we've shared the slideshow from the workshop with the entire high school community. And I urge you to open up that slideshow in your inbox. There's some really helpful, simple tips that can help you be more of a support to your kids if they need it, and also just for greater understanding how to navigate such challenges. So shifting away, and I also want to recognize Suzanne Short, our principal, and her team of administrators and counselors at the high school for their incredible leadership and empathy and care during this time, and our central administrative team and colleagues from across the district have really stepped up in a huge way and provided incredible level of support. As you may recall, the district was also chosen to be a site for two pop-up vaccine clinics for children's ages 5 to 11 run by the Westchester County Department of Health. The first two clinics were held in the Rye Middle School gym on November 18th and 19th. They went very smoothly. The county administered over 170 vaccines on the first day, on the 18th, and 165 on the 19th. I'd like to thank County Executive George Latimer for stopping by the clinic on Friday to say hello to parents and students and to greet the clinic workers. We have requested another pop-up. I don't know when we'll hear, but we certainly will let the community know if we're able to make that happen. A reminder that we have extended the deadline for tax payment for the second half of school taxes after tax bills were late getting to residents because of staffing shortages at the U.S. Postal Service. Payment has been extended to December 31st. We communicated this information via our local news media, but we ask that everyone please share the news with family and friends in the community. Since our last Board of Education meeting on November 9th, and please note, it's a three-week period of time, we've had 21 cases of COVID, eight at Midland, six at Rye Middle School, five at Rye -- six at Rye High School, five at Rye Middle School, and two at Osborne. Three of the Rye Middle School cases and one Midland case resulted in a small number of quarantines. We're hopeful that as more students are vaccinated, we will continue to see the number of required quarantines reduced. And that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you very much, Dr. Byrne, for your report. And I just want to echo my deep appreciation for all of those that you mentioned that came together to support our school community over the last several weeks, and will continue to do so, I'm sure, as we head into the next few. It kind of illustrates what we've seen a lot before, which is this deep care that we all have for each other as a community, and we tend to come together very strongly in the wake of any kind of loss or adversity. And, you know, just as a last note, the social-emotional support that is being provided right now for students, I think we've talked about that a lot as a priority in just regular -- on a regular basis for our students. And I was so happy to hear about the workshop that occurred this morning. And for those who -- any parent who's interested, there's occasionally Mental Health First Aid, a program that's done through Rye Act and in conjunction with the Rye Youth Council. It's a really helpful workshop to go to. It's a little bit more intensive than what was given this morning, but if there's other resources that people are looking for, I'd encourage people to watch out for that. So, thank you again. So, since we do not have a presentation this evening, we can go directly to hearing of the public. So we welcome and encourage our community members to address the board at this time. Please come to the podium, state your name, address, and if you are representing an organization. To ensure everyone has the opportunity to speak, please limit your remarks to three minutes. The board is here to listen. The public comment period is not designed to be a discussion, so please understand that we may not respond publicly to your comments or questions at this time. We take your comments seriously and may need more time to process and research an issue. We will ensure questions will be addressed by the appropriate staff member or possibly answered at a future board meeting. We will not entertain comments regarding individual students or district personnel as these are protected under state and federal privacy laws. Please know we take personnel concerns very seriously. On these matters, we would ask you to follow the appropriate administrative channels. As a reminder, the community may submit written comments at any time to the board by sending those to rcstboard@ryeschools.org. So seeing we have no one coming to the podium to make any comments, we can move on to our consent agenda. So can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Vivek Kamath, seconded by Tom Stein. Before we do the final approval, we'll just go through each of the sections to see if there's any additional questions. So we'll do Consent Agenda General. Consent Agenda Fiscal Construction.
I just wanted to jump in if it's okay, just to give a little bit of color on the change orders. A bunch of these change orders were discussed when we toured the middle school, high school. So if you look at the bulk of these change orders in this total amount are actually for steel at the high school. And if you recall, we were down where the new elevator shaft is. That was one place where it could not have been known until we ripped the ceilings out that there were different levels of floor in that area that required a whole new level of steel. So as you look through these change orders, the great majority are for steel reinforcement from different places that could not have been known. There was a floor replacement, and it was a concrete floor in the -- in a high school bathroom that had to be reinforced because when the tile came up after the abatement, there were cracks in the floor. Once the cracks were examined more in-depth, it was realized that it was a structural issue that had to be repaired. So as we were going through all of these change orders in advance of today's meeting, the great majority is for steel, and I thought that was an important one just to highlight for the board.
Thank you, and I appreciate that. I was looking through them myself individually, and so what doesn't really get reflected here is that there are some where there are credits applied throughout as well as additions, but it did seem like the biggest bulk happened to be from those steel needs.
Jane, can I ask a question about the change order? Does this -- do most of the -- there are quite a few. Did they mostly represent Phase 2? Or is it hard to?
Most of these are Phase 2, yes.
Okay. And do we think that this, you know, is this -- will this get us through Phase 2? Where are we kind of in Phase 2, and how far?
So we should be getting close to the end of Phase 2. I know that the final billing and all the change orders is usually a little delayed from the work. We still are awaiting arrival for materials, which we've talked about as well. So I can, for the next meeting, I can certainly, or even for my weekly report to the board, have that information for you.
Okay. So theoretically, most of the surprises from Phase 2 will --
Oh, yeah. There would be no more Phase 2 surprises at this point. I mean, these were surprises that happened over the summer, so we're --
Right, that we talked about on the tours, yeah.
Yeah, that we talked about over the summer. So these are -- this is just the paperwork to follow the surprises that came. So no more Phase 2 surprises. And frankly, in Phase 3, you know, much of Phase 3 is new construction, completely new construction. And with new construction, you really don't have much in change orders because it's brand-new construction. You could have a few things where the new wings join the old buildings. There could be things that you don't know that when you open up. But typically, those kinds of issues are covered by allowances, and so unless there's some sort of design error, which there should not be, you don't really see change orders with new construction.
That's true. And this might be a question for Gabby, who I know is not here, but I think this roughly totals about $650,000. Is this covered in the 20% cushion that we put in?
Well, there are things that aren't, and we're going to come back and talk about that in January with -- to be able to give a true fiscal update of where we are.
Okay.
So there are things, you know, that cost more because scope was -- had to be added because of different issues that came up, or prices were more expensive. And so then there are things that certainly have come down, but overall, we'll certainly see that cost has, you know, come in differently than the estimates. And so that's what we're doing now, is analyzing to what degree is that, and what's the impact moving forward? Because while the projects will continue moving forward, we have to take into account the cost differentials. So we'll have a much better and clearer report of that in January.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And I think it's important to note that we're, you know, some of this trailing paperwork is simply because all the work -- bulk of the work happened over the summer, and as they
Correct.
-- get back to the paperwork part, it comes back in, yeah.
They get back to the office, literally, and do the paperwork for it.
Okay. And I think there was another question under fiscal that, just to highlight, that we have on here some addendums to other contracts. So we have an addendum to -- or amendment, I'm sorry, to the work we're doing with Cognitive and Behavioral Consultants, which you mentioned earlier, as we partnered with them back in June, actually. And so we've -- there's one small change that was --
Right, the implementation of DVT at the middle school and the high school. This is an additional level of training in terms of forming groups and how those groups will be implemented, yes.
Okay, great. Okay, professional appointments. And I'll go back and -- and hold on. I gotta wonder why I actually opened the computer if I'm just gonna use my piece of paper. Classified appointments and special education. Okay. So can I get a vote to approve the consent agenda? Final. Six, nothing. So just a couple other things to note that are part of our consent agenda. As Dr. Byrne mentioned earlier, the extension of the second half Rye City School District tax payment was a part of the consent agenda, so that will be December 31st now instead of the end of November, given that delay from the U.S. Postal Service. We also have several gifts that are part of our consent agenda tonight. We have an $11,142 gift from Milton School PTO to purchase teachers' college libraries. And we also have a $10,000 gift from the Osborne School PTO to support curriculum enrichment BOCs programs, and then also a $70,550 gift from Milton PTO to purchase teachers' college library. So we always are appreciative for that support from our school PTOs in supplementing our materials in the schools and for enrichment programs as well. We've also established a memorial scholarship fund in the name of Charlie Northshield, who was a high school faculty member from 1974 to 2007. And this scholarship is awarded to a graduating senior who is interested in pursuing a career in building, design, technology, the skilled trades, or the military. So that was also established on our consent agenda tonight. And then we also have a professional appointment for a new interim assistant principal at the high school. Dr. Kathleen
Affigné.
Affigné. I didn't want to get it wrong. Affigné, yes? Was approved as part of our consent agenda tonight, so we welcome her and look forward to her joining our team.
And she will be, Brian, next week, I believe. She'll be working
Yeah, Monday through Thursday next week, and then a full week thereafter.
Working with Dr. Zegarelli, who we're very excited for him, sad for us, as he heads off to become the principal of Pearl River High School in Rockland County. And we wish him all the best.
Congratulations to Dr. Zegarelli, but in Dr. Affigné, we have a very, very seasoned, experienced administrator that will be a helpful addition to the team.
Yes, great.
Great.
And I think that's all from the consent agenda. So we also have on our agenda tonight, under Information and Discussion, two policies. So I'm going to turn that over to Mrs. Anderson, who is our policy chair.
Sounds very formal. Yeah. All right. So in our policy meeting, we met and we discussed many policies, but we have two to come forward tonight. 1440, which is complaints about school personnel. What you will see is this is really more of a change in structure than it is in content related to how community or parents could -- should they have concerns about school personnel? So really what this does is it kind of -- it just is a better delineation for people to understand the processes and steps should they have questions. So we are -- we've redlined the old version, and then the green is the new that will come in. Yep. Questions?
Yeah, so, I mean, I think it's great conceptually. My only comment is, in reading it in comparison to the other, the other sort of is specific to say, as a parent, go here, start here first. That's actually -- the way it's written now, that's actually absent. I mean, so if you read it with the context that we have, it's very clear. If you read it with someone who's had no context, and they're coming to this to follow what they do, it actually doesn't say, "parent do this," the way the other did. And I guess the question is, is that intentional, or, you know, just looking for clarity, if someone actually looks at this, decides, say, "How should I handle this, and what should my process be?" It's a little more vague in how it's written now, it's sort of saying, "The proper channeling of complaints will be this," but it doesn't say, "Who's channeling those complaints."
I respectfully disagree. I find the first sentence of the second paragraph, where it says, "The board believes that complaints and grievances are best handled as close to the origin as possible," would be a clear indicator that whomever it is who has a complaint, it should be directed towards the very first person. So if it is a teacher that you have a complaint or concern about, it would be that person to whom you would direct your conversation. And then if it is not resolved, you follow up.
I guess the broader point is that this applies to anyone who has a complaint.
Right.
It doesn't have to be just a parent.
I think it actually opens -- it broadens it out. To me, I read it as it was broadening it out beyond only parents. So if somebody else had a complaint about school personnel, they would follow the same chain of events.
I think that's fine. What I would still say, and again, I've spent too much time looking with how people can misinterpret things. And so, you know, the question of whether it's that -- I use parent as example, whether whoever it is, that it's sort of -- it would be their responsibility to go one to two to three to four to five, as opposed to, "I start the process, and someone else then takes it through the next channels." And that's where I think there -- depending on how you read it, might not be clear. Again, I'm not arguing with any of the substance, just basically saying, maybe we do a little more paint-by-numbers in the directions.
And if it's the responsibility of the complaining
Right, that's what I'm doing.
-- to follow the proper channels, which are
But I -- just to clarify what you're saying, are you suggesting that we come up with the people that might be complaining about one of those five, identify those individuals specifically in the preamble?
Because you said the parent I was hearing, almost like Chris said, that the proper channeling, that there's a notation of who's doing that channel.
The complainant.
The person bringing the complaint.
Right.
If they're -- if they go to the teacher, and then they want additional interaction, they would then go to the principal. And then they would go to the assistant or deputy superintendent, and they would go to, you know, not that the principal is going to automatically contact you because you brought a complaint to a teacher when they wouldn't necessarily even know that. Is that what you're saying, Tom? I think certainly could
Correct.
So there might be like a small edit that could be made in the therefore the proper channeling by the complainant or something like that.
That's literally all I'm saying.
Could be added into that, that second paragraph.
It would make it crystal clear.
Yeah, sure. I was interpreting what you were saying is that, because we don't say parents anymore, that that was
Yeah, sorry. Parent was used below. I really -- complainant is the right person.
I got your point.
Is it the person who has the issue, and it's their responsibility to go one through five? Or is it, "I start the process, and then someone in the school administration
On its own.
-- takes it through its process?
Having been involved in these situations, I do think we need to -- it's always best when we develop policies to allow ourselves an opportunity for wiggle room. And in these situations, sometimes a parent will initiate, and then a principal will say, "Actually, I will work with, and let me contact the teacher and bring it that way." I would not want to set up unintentionally for us to add language that perhaps creates a more adversarial conversation between complainants, for lack of a better word that we've used, and going through this process. Because at times, a principal may shuttle -- shuttle is not really the right word, but may help move through a process with someone as they have concerns, as opposed to making it the sole responsibility to say, "You must now file," to then therefore make -- I don't want us to do and create a policy that is more confrontational in language than it needs to be. Now, it would be my
I think that makes sense.
That's fair.
I think the question I'd have is, if the goals are -- this is what I think I'm hearing, so you can correct it if you're wrong. If the goal is for a complainant in general to who, let's say again, let's assume it's with teacher or staff, so it starts at level one, that they wouldn't go from complaint to the teacher, second step, complaint to the board? We're trying to sort of
Well, and it says as such, that we will not
Or even just go from teacher to superintendent.
Correct. The board will not explore anything.
Right. And so therefore, the channeling of complaints for that complainant is through one through five in the steps. There's nothing -- we could add a sentence that indicates that obviously the administration, you know, can step in at different points or adjust. That doesn't mean that, like, Eric is beholden to this structure, you know, which is what I heard you saying in terms of the wiggle room, that you wouldn't want to imply that, you know, the school administration can't step in earlier if it feels appropriate or things like that, which you could just add a sentence to say.
Well, no, what I'm trying to get at is this idea that we don't want to have or create a sense that it is an us versus them, that a parent or somebody who is having an experience that is not something that they feel is as they wish at the moment, that they are then on the defensive, and they are the responsible party to go through a more procedural and really tight-structured type of thing. At times, there's going to be perhaps the principal who's going to reach out to the Assistant Superintendent, Dr. Murray, to say, you know, "I've met with this parent. We would like to have a conversation." I don't want to set up a structure where we are really alienating families or parents and saying, "It is your sole responsibility to follow these procedural steps." I think that language can be interpreted as such, and instead, creating just a language that really enumerates for people, this is kind of as you move through, and it's less confrontational and adversarial, and more about a process, as opposed to dictating or stating very clearly that a complainant needs to move through said steps. I think we need to be thoughtful about how we're creating language, about how we work with community members and parents as it relates to concerns that come up. And policies are our statements. So I'm happy to table it, and we can -- everybody can kind of think through it a little bit more now that we've had this conversation, and we can bring it back for discussion number one at our next meeting. And certainly, board members can share with the policy committee some language and some thoughts that they may have related to that, and then we can bring that to the policy committee, and then we can bring that back. Does that make sense? Is that sound okay?
Sounds like a point.
Okay. Let's do that, then.
Yeah, I think it's worth doing that.
Yeah.
Because based on what you were just saying, then, you know, we have very formal language in here that might already come across as a little, not adversarial, but very, like, structured.
Well, and in some ways, it needs to be structured. Right? And so we want to make sure that there's that balance
But it's striking the balance between those two things.
Correct. So, please take a look at it now with these thoughts in mind, and provide -- the policy committee is meeting December -- in December. Hold one. I want to say the 17th, but I feel like I could be making that up. I am, because that's a Friday, so that's not when it is. Vivek, what do you got?
I think it's the
It is -- no, I'm lying.
So how about we do this?
I don't think we have one for a while.
No, it's the 22nd.
There we go, the 22nd. Yep.
But I think, just given timing, people should do this in the next week to get to you guys, just so it's fresh top of mind. If you have anything you want to add, just, you know, put it in an email to -- just to you, Jane, or
You can put it to me, and then with Vivek and Kelsey as copy, and of course, the superintendent. We can go from there.
Okay.
So the next policy is 9225. This is our policy related to nonrepresented employees. And just for context, the Board of Education typically works under contracts and contractual agreements and has the majority of our staff that works in these bargaining units. There are a small number of people who do not work in a bargaining unit and who do not work under a formal contract, per se. This is what guides their employment experience with us for this group. Our Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources, sorry. us for this group. Our assistant superintendent for human resources, sorry, has asked that we add, as this is now back, a new position, it was a position, is now currently being brought back, a certified athletic trainer. So, you will see that added to the listing, and then you will see where it talks about vacation days. This staff member, by virtue of their job, is required to work certain federal holidays, which other employees in this bargain -- not bargaining, but in this employee group are not required to work. Therefore, they are granted 15 vacation days upfront, and then they get to the same number of total vacation days at 22 during the course of employment. But they do at least start at 15, because the federal holidays, they are unable to take, unlike other employees in this group.
Is this a -- there is a certified athletic trainer, or is it we might have multiple certified athletic trainers?
We have multiples in some of these positions. So, there's two.
Right, so like a data analyst.
We have two athletic trainers.
Should we write this as plural?
So, yeah, just in the second page, it should say a certified athletic trainer rather than D.
No, you keep the N.
Yeah, I -- sorry. So, Chris just asked me a question, and I just answered it under my breath. So, for like data analyst, it is just the category of, right, so athletic trainer, it is the title. It is not to be representative of the number of employees that fall under that title. It's more of a catchment of people who work in, as designated, this employee category.
Right. I was just saying, so on the new language on the second page, the first word should probably be A rather than the.
It says the certified athletic trainer. Implanting, we only have one, rather than certified athletic trainers or a certified athletic trainer.
Got it.
I know, I'm annoying. I apologize.
Yeah.
I kind of asked the -- I knew where it was going.
I'm going to publicly recruit Tom to be on the policy committee.
Yeah, I mean, why not?
Put a lawyer on the committee.
All right. Anything else related to that policy?
Nope, I have no other questions.
Okay, great.
Yeah, one.
Anybody else? Oh, you do?
I just love the acronym is ATC for certified athletic trainer. Love it. Can't be cat, right?
Oh.
Athletic trainer, comma, certified.
Now, I'm disappointed I didn't catch that.
I did have to look it up to make sure.
No, 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 I really don't care. Please do not change the policy.
Okay. So, that is all the policies. Continuing
Yes.
-- the most exciting committee of the board.
Absolutely. So
Right.
Every
Every time.
Every time.
And we eat.
Are we done?
I'm done.
Don't get me out.
All right. Communications to and from the board. I will actually give a not-great update, because I did not review it before I came here. But we did have a technology committee meeting two weeks ago, I think now. And it was a really -- the meeting itself had very well attended. We have some brand-new community members that are part of it. Caitlin and team gave a great overview of where we have come in the last five years, because we are this year embarking on another, our next five-year strategic plan around technology, which is very exciting. And there's lots of amazing stuff that's been going on around technology. And so, I apologize that I don't -- I did not review before I came, or else I would have given a lot more details. I'm looking right at Caitlin in the back. But after the next one, I promise I'll come better prepared. I think it's now we're just at the jumping-off point of looking at, like, what do we want to do for the next five years? Okay. And no other committee meetings?
No.
Okay. So, then I will ask for a motion to adjourn. Chris Repetto, seconded by Vivek Kamath. All those in favor? Six, nothing. So, thank you very much for joining us. We will have our next Board of Education meeting on December 14th. So, we look forward to seeing you all there. Good night.